Good evening, the hour being after seven thirty, I now call the November twenty-ninth School Committee Meeting to Order. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we begin our meeting this evening, unfortunately, yet again, we have to pause and acknowledge the passing of a number of members of our community who have had so much to do with the education of students in Walpole and the community as a whole. This evening, Ms. Agnes Dapheney, a longtime teacher in the Walpole Public Schools, who taught at Stone and at Boydun, passed away. She had been a lifelong teacher here and a great member of our Walpole community, so we pause for a moment of silence for her now. And we also, as a school committee, recognize the passing this week of two of our colleagues in government, former Selectman Joseph Dunne and former Selectman William Maloney, who were great counterparts with this body in trying to deliver the services that our community needed, and they as well will be sorely missed. Thank you very much. Our next order of business is a Walpole High School student report.
All right. Hello, I'm Brendan Mahoney, and I'm a sophomore at Walpole High. Fall sports finished up with the high school football team, losing twenty-eight to fourteen in Weymouth on Thanksgiving Day. Looking back at fall sports, many of the teams went to the postseason. Some of the latest results include cross-country placing ninth for girls and thirteenth for boys in the state championship. The swimming and diving team also did well in the state championship, as they placed first in diving, first in fifty-meter freestyle, medley relay, and freestyle relay. Now their fall sports are over, some winter sports are beginning to practice, and others are holding tryouts. As you may know, Walpole High held Pride Day on the half-day before Thanksgiving break. This day was a day where students could sign up for activities to do with their friends, such as watching movies and playing games. It also furthered the new Pride Initiative in the high school. Most of the students were very pleased with how the day turned out. Pride Day also featured the optional pep rally that was run by Student Council. The pep rally was optional to go to, but all grades were welcome to attend. The pep rally featured many games that got many students involved, and it was overall a good time. Student Council has also been very busy in the past couple of weeks with planning many events. Along with the pep rally, Student Council arranged powder puff for junior and senior girls after the half-day before Thanksgiving. Student Council is also planning the Winter Ball on December seventh, which is semi-formal for all grades through ten. This dance will take place from seven to nine-thirty in the cafeteria of Walpole High. Many clubs are also planning things. The Latin Club is planning a field trip to the MFA and Italy in Boston for December fourteenth. The mock trial team is also preparing for real matches with scrimmages on December tenth and twelfth. The PM Club is also planning another trip to Boston for December. That's what's going on at Walpole High, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great job.
Best job.
Please feel free to stay, but we understand you have a lot of obligations this evening. Have a great day, go ahead. Thank you. Now move on to new business. Our first order of business is an out-of-state field trip request from the Walpole High School Foreign Language Class to Spain from April eleventh, twenty nineteen, through April twenty-first, twenty nineteen.
Hi, my name is Jen Hughley. I'm here this evening to request your permission to take Walpole High School students on an eleven-day language and culture tour through Spain. The trip is run by a local student travel company, EF Education First, and travels to Granada, Seville, Madrid, and then Barcelona. Walpole High School has an established relationship with EF, as our science department has taken students abroad with them to Ecuador, Peru, and the Dominican Republic for service learning opportunities. And our foreign language department traveled with them just last April on a language immersion trip to Spain. I have heard nothing but wonderful reviews of EF regarding these past experiences. We currently have eleven students committed to travel with us, and a twelfth parent actually just emailed me this afternoon. My colleague Elizabeth Flaherty and I plan to accompany the students during this April vacation. As it is a language and cultural trip, the students will visit important cultural and historical landmarks throughout Spain with a native tour guide who will interact with us in Spanish to provide historical and cultural insight throughout the trip. Along with ensuring students' well-being, Ms. Flaherty and I will serve as models and reminders to the students that they should be engaging in continuous communication in Spanish to immerse themselves in the culture. The benefits of this travel experience will last much longer than the students' high school years. Students will have the opportunity to put what they learn in the classroom here in Walpole to use in the real-world setting. Our hope is that they realize that their ability to communicate in the target language is a key which will unlock countless opportunities in the future. Thank you for your attention to this request.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hughley. I'm glad to hear that we're expanding our use of Education First. We've heard nothing but good things in this body, and obviously, we'll expect you and your students to come back and tell us how it went. We're happy to tag along if you'd like. Any discussion on this request? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve?
So.
Motion by Mr. Breen.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Gallivan. All those in favor oppose or abstain, five zero zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great evening. Our next order of business is Goal Four Strategic Plan Update.
Yes, Anne Arpen, Director of Technology, will give the school committee an update on strategic plan Goal Four, and she will go through the Goal Four as follows to maximize opportunities provided by technology to enhance teaching and learning and efficient operations. So take it away, Anne.
Thanks very much, it's a pleasure to be here, and a pleasure also to have our digital learning coaches here as well to follow my presentation here on the Goal Four. As Dr. Goff mentioned, the goal itself is to maximize opportunities provided by technology to enhance teaching and learning and efficient operations. There are three objectives. The first is to expand the use of digital learning resources to maximize student achievement, curriculum delivery, communication, and assessments. And pictured here are the four action steps that fall under that objective. The first is to communicate our vision and measure our achievements in digital learning through the SAMR model, which I believe you're all familiar with as that goes. And we communicated and made kind of a big announcement about our vision at the end of last school year to our staff and our parent community. And throughout the course of the year, the different curriculum components and lessons, and we're injecting that SAMR model as to help measure the transformative nature of moving lessons into that category. The next two objectives really are, I'm sorry, action plans to determine what our one-to-one model would look like and to identify a sustainability plan to continue it. We did initially come up with a goal to have grades four through twelve access one-to-one on a one-to-one basis, and we're still discussing our sustainability plan, it's being evaluated. Our adoption is that we did meet that short-term goal by having our grades four through six have enough Chromebooks available in class for every student to access at any time during the day. Grades seven through twelve were all distributed, students were distributed a Chromebook that they're taking home and bringing back into school and using it on demand. And the feedback, I will say, has been tremendous from teachers in particular, who are able to rely on the fact that the students will have a device at hand, so they can use complete flexibility with their curriculum to access those valuable digital resources. Sorry, I keep hitting that button. And then the last one is to access digital resources to personalized learning in particular. And what I have here are some examples of some of the more, I think, transformative or important products that we are using fairly consistently in various segments. The first is this Google Classroom, which provides a great sense of way to organize student assignments. The students have one now pretty much in all classes. It also is a good way to improve communication with families, because teachers' parents can see, get invited into the Google Classroom and see the different assignments. Also, part of that is the assessment component, that teachers can not only put an assignment on there, but they can collect assessments, and they're using that a lot now for formative assessments in particular. Another one is our STEM Scopes. That is our middle school science curriculum. It's a complete online, basically an online textbook, so students have access to all those science resources twenty-four-seven. Another one is Book Creator that we're using in a somewhat limited fashion, but it is a tool that students can really put their own voice into, literally, their own voice into projects, assignments, create books rather than a standard kind of report, and it's a very engaging tool. Pair Deck is another one, you'll hear a little bit more about from one of our digital learning coaches, and that's an assessment tool they're using. It's an interactive assessment tool, so not just, you know, taking a quiz, you know, online, but it's a, you know, a communication and interactive tool. And teachers are also using that for, as part of their inner lessons. That popularity has grown quite a bit. It started off, I think, in middle school last year, and I know our high school staff has been introduced to it and is very interested. And then another example is Freckle, which is a grades two to five math in the LA adaptive learning program. And what that does is it meets the student where they are in their learning and provides additional challenges so that they can excel in either direction. It's another tool where the data from that gives the teacher some very specific information about where each of their students are in the learning contour. The second objective is to continue our digital learning professional development to enhance student learning. This is always a big promotion for us. We do PD surveys, we did a number of them. The major one was done in the spring, and then at the end of last school year, our digital learning coaches did one specifically targeting their levels and their schools. Our digital learning coaches are providing real-time PD in on-demand as it's relevant to each of the teachers. We have ed camp sessions planned. We put it out there for all of the PD that teachers are expressing interest in, and we're hoping to get a lot of those sessions offered by our own teachers during our ed camp in January. We enhanced our professional development website, completely revamped it, and include a pretty good section on digital learning tools as well there. Another one of our goals was to look at the state's digital learning and computer science standards. So we started this year, the digital learning coaches, with coming up with learning guides, and we focused on the digital learning tools and the computing and society standards. We have activities all laid out for that, and we will then proceed now into the computer science and digital citizenship, well, yeah, the digital citizenship lessons too, so that we are covering all those bases, particularly at the elementary level. And another goal we had was to ensure we're communicating and we're building understanding really of the importance of maintaining student privacy with the data that is being collected. We're using so many digital tools, kids are signing in or they're connecting with their Google accounts. So we have, we join the Student Data Privacy Alliance, and through their, through tech actually, is supporting a person who is sending out contracts to all the vendors, holding them to a higher standard than what their normal privacy policy may indicate, to ensure that the data that they are collecting is not only kept within their program and not shared with third parties, but also that they commit to having the sufficient safety standards on their own and to ensure, you know, so that information isn't getting hacked or stolen. I think it's most important with this to really talk a little bit briefly about the impact that professional development does have on our students. Through their professional development and the expanded use of Google Classroom, for example, the students are able to have their assignments organized in a very easy way. It eliminates a lot of the, "The dog ate my homework," and those kinds of things. So it holds them accountable in a different sense, and the communication piece with families as well. The data that we're getting from real-time assessments is invaluable. Teachers can then understand where a student is at in a lesson and adjust it on demand, instead of waiting for the papers to come back and a week later figuring out that some students just didn't get a concept. So that really has impacted learning. And then digital citizenship and online safety is now, through our learning guides, are being introduced and taught and co-taught by our digital learning coaches at the elementary level. And as we all know, the age of our students having devices is at a much younger age now, so these lessons are really, really important, and hopefully will impact them as they continue up. Our third objective is to provide adequate physical and human resources to deliver and support digital learning environments. I call this the, basically, the equipment and the people. The nuts and bolts are infrastructure. As you know, over the past four, five, six years maybe now, I think from looking back, we have been on a, focused on improving the infrastructure to support multiple connections with more devices and all of that. And through our capital funds and E-Rate, which is a federal grant program, we now have all top-level switches done with a ten-gig connection, which is more than adequate to sustain us for the near future. And bandwidth has been increased almost annually. We've not had any slowdowns, it's been running well. And our wireless systems have been upgraded, and that is an ongoing project. But I thought I would just share with you that over the past four years, we have gotten back or taken off of our invoices over a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars provided by our E-Rate, the federal E-Rate program. It's an expensive proposition, and it would have, if we didn't get that money, we would be much further behind. Another action plan under this objective is to survey Massachusetts districts about what their one-to-one programs look like, how are they funding it, and things like that. There were a number of surveys that were put out there by various people that I've been gathering, as well as doing a few that didn't cover certain questions that we may have. I think the funding piece was enlightening, that over, almost half of the districts fund their one-to-one program through their operational budget. And the comment that a number of them made was that we're treating it like a utility, like the electricity, the gas, the heat, whatever. It's no longer, devices are now part and parcel, or textbooks is another one that they used as an example. Almost thirty percent were using capital funds, and twenty-three percent were leasing, but they didn't indicate specifically how they were funding the leases. And I'll just skip to the other, and then all potential funding sources that we have at our disposal or in our realm, are all being evaluated now to see what funds we can use on an ongoing basis to sustain our one-to-one. The other, there were a few other items on the strategic plan. I mentioned earlier, the learning guides for the digital literacy and computer science standards are still under development. We're still looking at resources specifically targeting, and we will be, for the computer science component. You will see through the digital learning coach presentations that this is, we are presenting these concepts to our kids, introducing them to things, the computer science standards, but not in a formal fashion yet. And that is the update for the strategic plan Goal Four. Happy to entertain any questions?
Questions on the committee, Mrs. Gallivan.
Anne, can you remind me of the SAMR model? What does the M and the R stand for?
So the M is modification, and the R is redefinition, so.
So how are we doing with that?
I think, feedback that I've been getting is that more and more are crossing that line into the redefinition. Some of the examples I gave with the products that are in use are good examples of that. These Pair Deck, for example, you know, it's not just taking an assessment, it's an interactive assessment. So they're communicating, they're thinking about things more, and that kind of crosses that line. I think the adaptive learning programs also definitely cross that line. They're not just taking an assessment or learning something online. It's targeting their level and helping them grow.
So that means you're using a software product, and it provides different kinds of opportunities for kids to learn, right?
Yes, in general, yes. An adaptive program will not give the same question necessarily to each student. This has the capacity to do it. This is still new, Freckle is still new, but they'll start off with a benchmark, and the program will identify where they are in each of the different levels. And then from there, each individual student will get their growth pattern package questions, things like, along those lines.
Different subject. Can you tell me what the Fuse Fellows have, like, brought to Walpole?
Yes, so the Fuse Program is through the Highlander Institute that Tech has sponsored. We're one of the districts, we have, and what it is, is there are two Fuse Fellows who are going through an eighteen-month program. There was a boot camp, and we have a design team here in Walpole that we've met with them, and their whole focus is on digital learning and digital resources to promote achievement. The Fuse Fellows, the two of them, have been in the buildings, they meet with early adopters. I think pretty much in every department, we have an early adopter. This is all for the high school, this is the high school program. And we just actually started collecting feedback, and one in particular said that she thought it was, it really has been introducing her to a number of different ways of delivering, you know, her curriculum and tools that she felt were going to be useful. At this point, it's still early in the game, she's hoping that there's more opportunities to collaborate with the coach, with the Fuse Fellow.
And then the thinking is they'll share that with other people in their departments eventually?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just, as just a comment, I really liked that digital citizenship, online safety piece, which I'm sure your technology coaches and our classroom teachers are constantly reinforcing, and it sort of goes to the wider themes about safety in the community and the schools that we've been really laser-focused on all year. So I think that's just an important piece of reinforcement that, you know, at home, at school, after school, we all do, so that's great to see, is a priority.
And I have to say, I think the adults are also appreciative of hearing that, as in that co-teaching model, because there's a lot out there, and it changes every five minutes, so. Okay.
Thank you, Anne.
All right, well, I'm going to introduce, turn this over to the digital learning coaches, and I think, put our vision statement up to continue the communication. And I think, I'll put our vision statement up to continue the communication.
Hi, everyone. So I'm Dave Cuzzi, I'm the digital learning coach for the middle school level. So this is our vision statement that Anne referred to, and I'll just go over briefly. It says, "Through continued and evolving access to digital resources, students are empowered to personalize their learning, to master essential content and 21st century skills both in and outside the classroom. Through the transformative use of technology, Walpole High School creates an interconnected educational community to actively explore and design solutions to real-world matters." So one of the things that Anne talked about was Pear Deck. So Pear Deck is an interactive lesson that gives us real-time feedback on kids. So a lot of us had this in class. Teacher took out the projector, we got wicked psyched that they were going to have this and it made the beep every time. Well, now what we have is we've learned that students are one and a half times more likely to fail in a lecture-based class than a class with active engagement. So we know that instantly making the class active, we are reducing that failure rate in the class. So what Pear Deck allows us to do now is we ask a question to the students and in real time, the teacher can see what the students are answering. I don't remember the Grapes of Wrath, so I don't know if those answers are correct or not. But what it does, it shows us that, okay, that they're getting it or they're not getting it. If, and it's hard to see on this, but if you notice, there's little smiley faces next to it. It also tells us how the kids are feeling about it, too. So if they're really confident in the answer, they're not confident in their answer. So they might answer it, but it might be, you know, that guess, the old, "Are you telling me or are you asking me?" when they answer it. So it gives us that instant feedback where normally we would have the kids fill out something and then we'd go home and we'd look at it and then realize that they didn't get it. Now I can stop the lesson, reteach it, and then make sure that, and then ask them a question again. Pear Deck gives you that ability then to ask a question again later. So now I'm reteaching it in the moment and getting the kids to get to that level of understanding that, you know, would take me a day to get to, now I can do it within the classroom. So it's an instant feedback. Kind of a new feature we've done this year is Pear Deck has the ability to create vocabulary cards. So what it does is it's a great way for kids to learn vocabulary. And it pairs the kids into groups of two, and one kid has to define the word and the other kid has to make a drawing of the word. And then it alternates for however many vocabulary words are. They all show up on the screen and the class gets to vote on it. And then it create, then they create basically a study guide or study set of vocabulary cards that everyone in the class winds up getting at the end. So it's a, it's a fun game, keeps the kids involved in it, they're, you know, really learning definitions. They're talking with their partners, you know, it gets a little, you know, some of the drawings are way off, so it's really interesting to see the way the kids do it. But it's a lot of fun, and they're also learning, because again, they're actively engaged in what they're doing. It's not just, you know, the old, "Get your index cards out, write the word on one side, write the definition on the other." This is more of an interactive kind of version of that. One thing we've done at Johnson Middle School is we have a group of eighth graders in a math class that are advanced in the math. And we found that some of the lessons, they have, they understand that some of the lessons due to outside math places they go. So one of the things we wanted to have them do to demonstrate mastery was for them to be able to explain. So, meeting with one of the math teachers and one of the math coaches who's here today, we talked about a way to do that, and we kind of used the idea of Khan Academy where a student is going to explain this exponent rules through the use of an app that we have called Dosiri. And if I play it, hopefully it works. I'm just going to fast forward a little bit just. So the point is to, our goal is to create a series of these, create a YouTube channel in the district that kids that are struggling with things can go and find this YouTube channel and say, "Oh, I don't understand exponent, so here's a YouTube cha, here's a video done by an eighth grader. I can watch it and I can learn how to do exponent." So it's from the kid's point of view, and it's a really good, and our hope is by the end of the year that we have at least one video for, you know, each one of the major topics we're doing in the eighth grade. So this is the first one, this is our first run at it. I think you did a good job. So it goes on. But you can see that he's now, he's demonstrating his mastery through the ability to explain it. So it's kind of that next level where, yes, they can explain it, they know how to do it, but can you actually explain it? So that kind of demonstrates our mastery for that eighth-grade student. One thing we've also done in the middle school level is we've taken away the assignment notebooks, or we've replaced them, I shouldn't say taken away, but we replaced the notebooks in grade seven and eight. We had the ability, and I remember talking to Dr. Goff about this last year, we have an embedded way for kids to take their assignments. And so this year, we expanded the use of Google Calendar, and the teachers are posting assignments through Google Classroom and also on the calendar for the students. So instead of the traditional, "Take out your assignment notebook, let's write it down", it's, you know, "Take out your computer, let's put it into the calendar." Or, "I put it into the calendar, let's take a look at it." The other thing this does is there's no confusion between, and I know this with my own son in sixth grade, is, "What did you write down in your assignment notebook? I can't read anything you wrote." So we've give, so now we've also, the parents have access to this. So the calendars are public to the, and the parents can look at it and say, "Hey, you know what, you have social studies homework tonight, you know, so let's get started on it." So the parents have access to it, and they know, you know, even before the kid gets home, they know what the child has. So it's now given parents kind of that more, they feel more involved in what's going on rather than, you know, "Do you have any homework? Or you didn't write anything down? Okay, I guess you don't have any homework." So now, hopefully this cuts down on the lack of homework and hopefully this is more of that open communication between the parents and the students and the teachers. So that's my part. I don't know if anyone has any questions about that.
Quick question, what grade level was the Pear Deck being used in?
So Pear Deck's all middle school.
Okay.
Yeah, six to eight's being used. And some, there's some elementary using it as well, and then expanding it to the high school as well, so. I think last year we had about eight teachers doing it, I think we're up to 20 this year.
Cool, thank you.
Mrs. Gallivan.
For the Pear Deck, Dave, you used the Grapes of Wrath as the example. Does the teacher write the questions, or is there a can, like, is there a prepared thing for Grapes of Wrath? Because my question is, like, can I choose the book and write the questions if I'm the teacher?
Yeah, so it's all created by the teacher.
It is, okay.
The good thing is that it's completely embedded in Google Slides. So you create your Google Slides and then you can just, there's an add-on that you can just make it a Pear Deck.
I see.
So a lot of, the good thing about it is a lot of teachers have slide presentations already done, and they just download the add-on that brings it into Pear Deck, and they just edit it a little bit and it's ready to go. So they don't have to reinvent the wheel.
Oh, that's good. My other question is about the Google Calendar. Are all the middle school teachers doing it? Are you, like, starting with the people that are, like, sort of ready to do it? Like, how does that part work?
So typically, I target the people that are ready to do it. Some are, I know that at Johnson, they are, I'd say probably have like an 80% buy-in rate. And then Byrd is probably like 70 to 80% as well, but it's, it's as their comfort level with it. You know, it's tough.
No, that's a good start if you're seven, yeah.
Than the teachers are sometimes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Cuzzi? Thank you, Dave.
Hi, I'm Nancy Carroll. I'm the digital learning coach at Boydin School and Opus Road School. So, you know. I get the opportunity to talk about some tools that we are fortunate enough here in Walpole to have access to, and they're free, and so we're taking advantage of that. Teachers across the grade levels are incorporating the Google Suite tools, which promote the forces of learning, critical thinking, communication, collaboration, and creativity. Some examples include when students draft and revise stories and conduct research within Google Docs. They design interactive digital posters with Google Drawings, sometimes to compare and contrast concepts, or they might share their math thinking. They might create a timeline, all kinds of different examples. Google Slides are used to create presentations. Like in second grade, a project was just done with where I live, and they were using Google Maps and taking screenshots. It was pretty amazing to think they could do that. Some students are creating interactive science or vocabulary notebooks using Google Slides. And some of our students have even done some rudimentary stop-motion animation, kind of fun. Elementary students are using Google Spreadsheets to construct and analyze data. Some examples include taking pumpkin weights and circumferences and plugging that information into Google Sheets and then creating a graph or chart and looking at the data, making some assumptions. Also, some students were using this to graph family veterans and the different branches of the service that they were in. These tools work seamlessly in all areas of the curriculum and fall within the digital tools and collaboration strand of the digital literacy and computer science frameworks, always have to think of that. We all keep in mind and know that whichever tool is being implemented, it is not about the tool, but it's about the skill and the pedagogy behind it. Anne brought up Google Classroom. It's a great blended learning platform. I'm not sure, but maybe you heard this morning that it was just announced that Google Classroom will be ready for G-Suite basic, business, and enterprise customers. And what does this mean? Well, it means that our Walpole students are already ahead of the curve as teachers and students as young as first graders, and I mean first graders, are using Google Classroom as a tool for communication, assignments, discussions, personalized learning, and real-time targeted feedback. This blended learning platform aligns nicely with the digital tools and collaboration strand of the DLCS frameworks. I tripped over that one, so I don't want to spell it out for you. And I just want to point out that the picture on the left, that there were a couple professional development opportunities offered during the summer and in the fall to teachers to learn. The Google Classroom, a new platform, was just brought out. And the students on the right are all doing their own assignment within the Google Classroom. The teacher assigned a lesson and now they're working on it individually, so. Digital citizenship can be defined as the norms of appropriate and responsible behavior with regard to technology use. According to the ISTI CEO, Richard Kulata, "Learning to be an effective digital citizen is not something that happens if we don't actively teach it. At the elementary level, we are continuing direct instruction with a lesson for each grade level using resources from common sense education and Google's Be Internet Awesome." Students learn about safety and security, ethics and laws, as well as interpersonal and societal impact. The digital learning coaches are also providing professional development to teachers and compiling resource materials for them in the form of a Google site. That's, that part is underway. Digital citizenship extends beyond teaching internet safety. It's about teaching students to respectfully interact online with others, making their schools and their community better, as well as evaluating the validity of information that they access online. I'll end with that in many ways, the ideas of digital citizenship overlap with the ideas of citizenship itself. And I don't know if you had any questions for me?
Questions?
Nancy?
It's great, it's great. I'm curious, do you like the job that you're doing?
Oh, my gosh, I was going to come up and say, "Thank you very much, I love my job. I love my job." And year two, you know, year one, we were kind of unsure, and I think the teachers were unsure. It's amazing to see that the growth that the teachers have made, which in turn equates to the growth that the students have made as well. It's really, it's just a great job, yes.
That was a question I was going to ask, I was going to wait till it was over. What are we noticing about growth in the students, both objectively and subjectively?
Well, I think we're seeing that students, you know, we all call our students digital natives, but they, they also need to be taught the skills that they're, they're, you know, about these tools that they have in their hands. So we're seeing that even at younger levels, they're looking at the keyboard, I mean, basically, looking at the keyboard differently at the younger grade levels. So, you know, kindergartners and first graders are using a color-coded login system so that they're finding the letters a little bit easier and they're not spending that time. It's not as frustrating for them or the teachers to find the letters and have them log in. The students are so comfortable with sharing their information now online, and I think they're getting some real targeted, real-time feedback from their teachers, which in turn, you know, helps them move forward with their progress. Because they're getting, you know, it's easier for the teachers to give feedback. It's, you know, they could be working with a student, or the, you know, some students could be working, or the students could go to a special and the teacher could be on our computer, you know, providing some feedback right away. You know, it's easier. I think that those are some basic ways that, you know, we're seeing improvement. Kids are comfortable with the tools, the teachers are becoming more comfortable with it. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, impart it, you know, and I think that is a big, is the integration, and it's great to hear how much buy-in the teachers are, you're getting from the teachers now. I guess I just mean overall, and I know it's kind of a big global question. How's it, how do we interpret growth, I guess? I know, you don't have to answer it tonight, really.
You kind of look, you try to find research about how technology is impacting student learning. But what we're seeing is that, you know, like with the MCAS, and I, you know, students are being asked to read online and to use digital tools within that, say, that one assessment. And so now, you know, they're, years ago, the kids were befuddled by that. They, you know, they weren't really, they were kind of clicking through things. And now they're comfortable with learning online, reading online. For some of you, you know, I'm, I'm a digital reader, I love reading off my Kindle. Some of the kids like to read online, but many people still want that book. And there are two different ways to learn. And so I feel like the students are learning both ways, to interact both ways.
And I love to hear at some point, not now because Freckle's new, but just how, the feedback about the Freckle program. I think that's really, sounds like it has a lot of potential with the adaptive learning, so.
And I think that's coming at the end of the year.
Yeah, I'm sure it's early for it now, but.
There is a lot of potential. I mean, that, Freckle has been around for several years and, and I know that many of the teachers that use it like it because it does reach the students at their level, and they can see that. And they can then pull a group and say like, "Wow, I can really work with these kids on this skill." And you're not guessing, or you're not waiting until, you know, sometimes days later to foot your out.
Right, right. Thank you.
Other questions for Nancy? I'm Nancy's Twitter superfan, so.
No, she's great on Twitter.
Share the good news.
That's good.
Good evening, I'm Karen Wolf. I'm the digital learning coach at Elm and Fisher School. And I'm going to share three lessons that we do in elementary. Hopefully you'll sort of address what you asked as well. So this is an app called Book Creator. Book Creator is an open-ended creative and cross-curriculum virtual publishing app. Teachers can create resources, or students can create interactive stories, digital portfolios, science journals, or comic adventures. A fifth-grade student at Fisher commented after he published his first book, "Dude, this is the greatest app ever." We start with the little ones, we start coding with B-bots. B-bots are little robots for children. Students use them to create algorithms using logic, programming, sequencing, estimation, problem-solving, and computational thinking. After writing the code, if there's a mistake or a bug, students have to debug the code. A third-grade student at Elm told me that the funnest part of coding is finding the mistake and fixing it. Also, I'm pleased to tell you this year again, Mrs. Wyman is bringing some of her sixth-grade students to Elm and Fisher for coding buddies. And this is where the middle school students are working with the elementary students, and they're showing them how to code their own game using Scratch with block programming. And also, we're using a green screen with an app called Do Ink. Green screen allows pupils to discuss, evaluate, or reflect on their learning using their imagination and digital skills. People can share a story or get into character by using a background setting of their choice. So on the left, we have fifth-grade students, so they research planets. This is, so on the left, we have fifth-grade students, so they research planets. Instead of just doing a report, they had to create a travel ad for the planet. And on the right, with third-grade students, they presented their reports as Robin Hood and Pegasus instead of just, just writing the report. So I think this is a, a great example of what students can accomplish with technology. Can I answer any questions?
Mrs. Galvin?
I just want to comment on what, what somebody mentioned about the fact that you guys are tweeting stuff out and it's, I think it's really important for those of us that can't necessarily imagine what you're doing. And even just those examples, it, it brings a lot of it to life.
And I, I love tweeting it out because I'm so proud of the students and what the teachers are doing. And I, I want everyone to see, so.
It gives some good insight. It really is important. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Galvin, you have a Twitter?
I was just gonna say, are you getting on Twitter now?
I've had one. I've tweeted once in my whole life, but I watch.
If we didn't know.
Oh yeah, here's.
Just saying.
Very good.
Technology will never replace great teachers, but technology that ends great teachers is transformation.
Very good. Thank you, Anne. We will now move on to, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Yes, Walpole High School Principal Stephen Imbush will now report on, to the school committee and the community regarding the advanced placement in the SAT testing results. Hey, Steve.
So I gave you the slideshow on paper as well, just because a lot of the, the, the numbers that I have on the screen are very small, so I've given you a couple of different reports for AP and a little later on as well. Um, I'll go as quickly as I can, starting with the SAT. First slide here just shows some of the, the ranges of scores that our, our students are getting. We had about 263 students from the graduating class of 2018 who took the SAT over the course of their junior and senior years. So these are, whatever their highest scores are, are put into these, into these reports by the College Board. And what I've, what I've done is I've just put, I, I could have probably stayed up here for two hours with all the reports the College Board gives us, but I, I've tried to synthesize it a little bit for you. Walpole High School compared to just the state in general. So you can see the overall total score, which is out of 1,600, and where our students are, are lying, about eight percent getting the, you know, between 14 and 1,600, 30% between 12 and 1,300, another 46% going over, over the 1,000 mark. And you can see the breakdown between the, the reading and writing and the math up there as well and compare it to Massachusetts. Some of this you need to take home, put it under your pillow and take it out when you wake up three in the morning. Yeah, a good, good nighttime reading, but. Just in the interest of time, I'm going to keep on moving to the next slide. The 263, the, the essay portion of the new SAT is optional now. So typically, of our students, there was 62% of them took the essay. That was about 163 students. And you can, this was just interesting, I thought, because you can break it down and look at their average scores between the students who took the essay and those who did not take the essay, both in math and, and reading. I don't like looking at average scores usually because, I mean, all of our students, of, of a graduating class of 273, 263 took the SAT. We, we have a huge number of students taking the SAT now that we didn't have before. Part of it, I think, is, is thanks to yourselves who, who have fun, helped fund the PSATs for every student in ninth, 10th, and 11th grade. That has really helped to get them used to the exam as they're working through it. So, when I was trying to decide which reports to, to show here, I, I said, let me take a cohort of students. So, on this slide, what I'm looking at is 11th grade students in March of 2018. So these are 11th graders and it just shows really their average scores. The average scores in, in English and the average score in math, 605 in both of those. There were a total of 90 students of, in the graduating class who took the SAT as 11th graders in March. Very often, you know, we kind of, as we're following our students, we're see, you know, we're seeing some of the students who might know already that they're going to go early decision, for example, might take it earlier in, like they do in March and with the option then to take it again in May, possibly even, even take it a third time to try and increase their score. So, in May of that same year, same group of, not necessarily the same students, but the same class, the 11th graders, there were 190 of them who took, or 180 who took the SAT in May. And, you know, you, you up the number, you double the number of kids taking it, you're going to lower your averages. So you can see that the averages are slightly lower, 576, 572 in math. And then looking at that same group, when they're 12th graders in October of this year, which is the next slide, there were a total of 126, 24 students who took the SAT in October. Some of those may have been first-time students, one-and-done, I, I have to go to college next and apply, I better get this SAT done. Some of them, it might have been their third or fourth time taking it, trying to increase their, their averages. So, I'll leave those scores with you to review. I spoke already about the PSATs. We do have the ninth graders taking PSATs now. We do this in October. We do it in school, all ninth, 10th, and 11th graders. The, the exam is scored a little differently, but you can see that the scores are slightly lower in the four, high 400 range. And then as they, as they go up, the next slide shows them as 10th graders and as 11th graders, you can see that those averages get right back up to where you might expect them to be in early 11th grade. They're, they're accumulating more knowledge, they're going through classes, they're, they're gaining more ability to, to do better on this exam. Every student practically, say maybe, you know, three or four are taking the PSATs. And what that's doing is, we, we used to offer the PSAT, if you remember, on a Saturday. We had about 75% of, of the class, the 11th graders, who would take it. We'd usually only offer it to, to that, that group. Now with, you know, ninth, 10th, and 11th graders all taking it, there's only one or two kids who opt out. And what it's doing is it's getting them used to it. They're just really getting used to the timing of the test, the kind of question that's being asked, and, and feeling like, okay, I can do this. So by the time they get to be 11th graders and 12th graders, they're, they're, they're really, they're ready for it. Any questions on SATs?
Okay. You know, I've asked a bazillion questions on this topic.
Yep.
And the reason that I think it's important is because math is a cumulative kind of a subject in a different way than language skills are. I mean, I know they're both cumulative, but to me, what's more important is, do our, are our graduates coming out of high school competent in a variety of things, not the particular math class that they happen to be taking in a given year? And I think that a test like this does. It pulls from what you've learned in sixth grade and ninth grade and 11th grade. So, I think the test itself is important, but the learning is, is the really important part. And my question is, have the math classes started to embed more than just what they're teaching that particular year? Because I think that, that that is what I notice. I've done a little bit of, of tutoring in the last year. And these tests are hard. They're really, really hard. And, you know, to get a good score is, is a challenge. And what I notice, the kids seem, the kids that I've worked with are not confident math students. And it seems to me like when you prompt them just a little bit, they know a whole lot more than they think they know. But it's not something that they're, that's, it's not fresh in their mind. And I could see kids just saying, I gotta skip that one because I just don't remember that. Whereas if it's part of their, their, part of the class involves asking them to go back to some of the previous concepts, I think that that would be a way to help a lot of kids. So I'm just wondering, does that happen in the math classes?
They do, but it's not, it's not to the point where, I mean, it, it's that balance, right? Between getting through the, you know, and, and reaching the, the standards, the frameworks that we have to, to achieve and teaching to the, to this test. Because this test is very, it, it's very unique. It's, it's not. You have to be, you have to learn a little bit about how to take this test.
Definitely.
There are, there are SAT questions that are, that are done in math classes. And teachers will refer to them and say, this could, could be an SAT-type question. Or they'll use SAT-type questions, but it's, they're not to the point where you are preparing or take, giving them an SAT prep class. Very few of our students in Walpole take SAT prep classes. It's been the case for a long time. We have, we have offered SAT prep classes. We've had companies bring them in. We have had our own teachers teach SAT prep for free and we still can't get the kids to come and take the classes. Those who do see an increase, probably on average, about 100 points on their SAT. Towns around us, principals tell me, almost 100% of students are taking SAT prep courses. It's just not in the culture of Walpole that, that kids take SAT prep courses as much as, as, as much as it is in other towns. It's always been the case while I've been here. You've asked me before and I think, I think, you know, with the new schedule, assuming we keep the eighth period in the schedule, this is our kind of a test year. I think there may be an opportunity for us to offer the SAT prep courses within the school day. And I think that could be a game changer for, for this particular test, especially in math.
Thank you.
I was gonna ask some of the same questions because this doesn't show, I, I'm, first, I'm delighted that more kids are taking it and I'm glad to hear that the early PSAT taking is getting kids feeling comfortable and not afraid to take the SAT. That was one of our goals. But the other obviously is to bring up the scores. And I know, I don't think this presentation shows what we've seen recently. I don't think the math scores have gone up much or they've been pretty stagnant. Is that true or not true?
It's, they've gone up slightly, but this, the, this particular test has changed over the, this is the first cohort, the group that just graduated who were taking the new SAT. So, they actually, the, the report that they give us from College Board warns us, please don't compare what you're seeing in this to other years because it has changed pretty, you know, so much.
Yeah.
I think we will be able to compare. I didn't put those up specifically for other, to other years because I don't think it's a fair comparison. If I had anecdotally, I think they probably have gone up slightly, but not, not a huge amount. I mean, this again is the first group. The, I, I don't think that this particular group took the PSATs as ninth graders. They did in 10th and 11th. So the group that we have coming up through now will have taken it as ninth, 10th, and 11th graders. And it will all be the new SAT, which I think we'll be able to compare a little better to, so.
And my follow-up was going to be how do we help kids prepare more? So it's great to, if we're thinking creatively about how to use the eighth period because I do think that is a problem and hearing, just went to dinner with some women in my neighborhood whose kids go to all different schools and it's amazing how much more PS, or SAT prep kids are doing in other schools and other towns or private schools. And I don't think that's a help to our kids. So whether it's in the classroom, you say there's sometimes are SAT questions or somehow in the day. I think it would be really important, getting kids used to it the same way they're getting used to taking the PSAT.
Yeah. We're, we're gonna, we're gonna work on that. I, I mean, getting it into the school day is, is definitely, it's, it's a bittersweet thing in a sense because I hate to teach to the tests directly.
I know, I know.
You know, but at the same time, to, to have it there as an offering, that kids can take it. Maybe, you know, we have a lot of kids now who are in study halls because we, you know, we have most of our kids taking a study hall, that they could have that option of going in and taking some prep work, especially coming close. We are, we do bring a company in now that will do a crash course. It's a weekend course, the weekend before the SATs. And they, we have them coming in last year. We had them come in again this year and they'll be in again in the spring. And that's not a bad way of doing it because you're not going into that, you're not committing to eight weeks of prep every Wednesday. I gotta go for two hours and, you know, do this. And then interfering with sports and other things that, that are happening. But this, if they can commit to one weekend, it would be a huge help. And we'll get the word out on that before the next SAT as well.
Agreed. You know, I like learning for a learning sake. Unfortunately, our kids have to compete with other kids from other towns, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, okay, to move on to AP. I did give you two other reports on AP and these are the AP courses that are offered by College Board. The ones that are in, in the larger writing are the ones that we offer. There are many of those other ones that we don't offer that kids still take the AP. Some of them are taking them online. We don't offer it necessarily as a, as a course, but you know, we have kids who take AP Psychology. They've taken Macroeconomics, Microeconomics. We've had kids take German, even though we don't offer those as AP courses. Typically, our kids who are taking it with our teachers are doing better. This is very, very small, unfortunately for those people looking at it from the room, but I did give you a report on this. There is one of those reports which is a little clearer. And what that will show you is all of the AP tests that were taken by our students. We had a total of 203 students who took AP tests. Some of them, most of them took multiple tests. And this will show you all of the kids who got fives, fours, threes, twos, and ones in each of the, of the AP exams. This is a back-to, back and front report. You'll notice some of the AP tests that we didn't offer last year. For example, AP Psychology. One of the reasons we are offering AP Psychology this year, we have 76 students who have signed up and are taking AP Psychology with a teacher this year. There were 33 who, who took it last year, either took it online or took our CP level, level courses and tried the exam themselves. The numbers aren't great, but, you know, my expectation and is that with this next one, because the, they're in a taught class, those scores are going to go way up, so. The next report is one that you'll definitely have to take home with you and, and browse through because there's a lot of information on this. This is a five-year report which looks at our AP scores over the last five years in every subject and compares it to Massachusetts and compares us to the rest of. of the nation. So you can see, uh, on that first page, that our numbers over the five years have gone up. The two hundred and three students, um, a three is, is a passing score, three, four, or a five is a passing score in AP. And of the two hundred and three, a hundred and seventy-eight got three and above. That's eighty-eight percent of our students are, are, um, at the, at the passing rate. Each of the, the next, um, ten or so pages goes over each of those A- AP exams. And it shows you our average scores. It compares it to Massachusetts, it goes back over five years. I won't bore you and go over it all, because these people here wanna go home. But, uh, you know, I mean, if you just, just quickly go to page nine on that report, I guess I could point out a couple of things. One would be that, you know, you can see those scores in psychology. Bring this report back with you next year, and I'll show you a report that shows, you know, how, how our seventy-six students do with, um, with the class that they're taking, because I've sat in on that class, and it is absolutely amazing. Very consistent scoring, if you look at the Spanish language and culture. For the last five years, our average score, scores have been over four, um, four point two five, five years ago, up to four point two eight, um, this year, for an average score. No student over the last five years has got a two or a one in, in that. And, and you can see the same thing with, with many of our other AP classes. Statistics, our numbers are going way up. Total exams last year was twenty-one, we're up to fifty-one this year, with an average score of three point eighty-eight, eight-eight. Kids are taking, you know, our, our population is not growing like you see this growing. Um, you know, in fact, our population at the high school probably went down slightly this year. But yet, double the number of students are, you know, it seems, are, are taking APs and doing extremely well. And that's important for, for students to know that it's okay to try one, and, you know, give it your best shot, because, um, the likelihood is you'll, you'll do well. Couple of, um, this is the last slide, but, um, just with, with that group last year, an AP scholar is a student who receives scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams. We had thirty-three AP scholars. An AP scholar with honors had at least three point two five on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher in four or more of the exams. We had nine. We had twenty-four AP scholars with distinction, who scored at least three point two five on all AP exams, and a three or higher on five or more of these exams. And we had three national AP scholars. These kids scored at least four on all AP exams taken, and scores of four or higher on eight or more of these exams. You can do extremely well in Walpole High School. And I think this shows that, you know, when, when I say I don't like averages, this is why I don't like averages. You know, you can do extremely well in, in Walpole High School, and kids are doing it. And, you know, I think it's only going to improve as we, as we move along. So, that's the AP report. Any questions?
Um, the basic calculus is new, right? I'm just curious how many kids signed up for that?
For this year?
Yeah.
Um, I don't have that number this year.
I was just curious, because I, you know, I think there was a little concern about filling the class. I'm delighted to see that it happened.
Oh, it's running, and it's, and it's vibrant. Uh, in fact, um, I think most of the, um, probably the stronger math students are, are jumping in there. But we're, we're, we've got a healthy, um, AB class as well, so, um, both of them are running, and running well. And the statistics is running just as, as well.
No, and I'm delighted to hear statistics, because so many kids are taking it, because it's such an important field right now. Um, and are there any prerequisites for the psychology, just out of curiosity? Like, is it mostly seniors who take it?
We, we kept it to seniors this year.
Okay.
Um, that was, just funny you should ask that, because I asked the teacher that question just this morning, if, if we thought we should open it up to juniors, so, um, you know, we'll, we'll take a look at that as well. But we were only planning to run two sections, and we had seventy-six kids. We decided we'd throw another section in there, so... And I've talked to the kids, and they absolutely love the course, so, um, the teacher is fantastic, and, um, you should come and sit in. It's really great.
Yeah, I'd love to.
Oh, cool.
For the questions, we're Principal Bush. This is Gallo.
I just wanna say thank you. I think you've put a lot of effort into doing a lot of things well. And I know we've put some pressure on you on this one, so, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thank you. Um, no, Stephen, I just wanted to say it's really nice to see that there's an increase in the number of students taking AP courses, because it's just showing that they have more confidence, they're willing to try, they're willing to put themselves out there. So, it's a nice mind shift, and, and I think that'll continue.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, thank you.
Our next order of business is our math coach report.
Yes, we have Alison Colaruso and Carolyn Kelly from the elementary schools, and Carrie Taylor and Jill Masterson from the middle school math coaches, who will report on their progress to date. So first up is Alison Colaruso and Carolyn Kelly, representing the elementary math coaches.
Good evening, I'm Carolyn Kelly, I am the math coach at Elm Street School and Boyd and Fisher.
I'm Alison Colaruso, and I'm the math coach at Elm Street School and Fisher School.
I wanna thank you for inviting us tonight.
So, just a sixty-day update, kind of what we've been doing since we started school in August. So a huge part of our project since August has been to create data dashboards for math data across the elementary schools. So these data dashboards collect data on Envision topic assessments, the Freckle benchmarks that were rolled out in September, and they will be updated for the January benchmark, as well as the May benchmark. It includes MCAS data from the previous year. So on a fourth grade data dashboard, it has their third grade MCAS score. It also includes Title I math assessments, and how we determined that eligibility, to see if you met the requirements to get Title I services. And it also includes whether or not you are an EL student or a special education student, so that when we're analyzing data, we have a clear picture of exactly the student that we're looking at.
I wanna also thank our digital learning coaches for helping us get it up and running at Lynn Rowan here. Our data specialist at Central did a fabulous job getting that information out, so we could start making the data dashboards. The next, I actually started last summer going through the Envisions. Envisions is our program to help us deliver the curriculum and the, and the standards to the students. And, um, went through K through five, going through every single lesson, to see which ones are actually with the Massachusetts framework standards now, which ones aren't appropriate, and had made a sheet so every teacher could have it to look at. Maybe if it has something in it, um, like, with the exponents with the bases that aren't ten, no longer the fifth grade standards, so that's something that you don't need to do, when you have other standards to do. Some people might use it as differentiation, maybe some children are ready for a challenge of that, but let them know which ones actually match our standards. And we, since we purchased this program, I think it was six years ago, Massachusetts has changed some of the, um, math standards in July of two thousand seventeen, so I want to make sure we're still on top, on, on target with that.
We also prepared grade level math handouts for the open houses, that really gave a good outline for parents as to what their child is going to be learning throughout the year. Um, it also had both of our contact information, in case they had any questions about the curriculum. We've also been hosting math curriculum nights for parents that outlines the curriculum again. We've been walking them through the different methods to solve equations, and the methods that are appropriate for each grade level. And we've also been giving them games that they can play at home with their child to reinforce the curriculum, and then having those conversations at home that can also enrich the curriculum as well.
Wanted to make sure we found a way to bring the parents in, make sure they have some information. I wanna thank the NCTA, the Norfolk County Teacher Association, for giving us a grant so we could buy some material to send home as gifts, uh, games, so they can take home as a little gift when they leave, so they can work with their children. We have, we have been working on, um, doing professional development daily with the teachers, um, whenever we're in the classrooms, but also a more formal one. We did curriculum meetings in November, and we're going to do them again in January. With, I'm doing K two, and Alison's doing, uh, grade three through five, to do that. And EdCamp is also in January, so we'll be presenting there, and that the teachers can have a choice if they, what they'd like to work on, if they wanna come and join us with that one.
Um, we also created Google classrooms for teachers that share resources that they can use in their classrooms daily, um, to kind of segue about not teaching to the tests, but really giving questions that are aligned with MCAS. I've been creating constructed responses that are similar to the MCAS open response questions for teachers, and instead of just giving them a handful, I've been creating them based on what they're working on in the classroom. So for example, if a third grade teacher is working on introducing multiplication, I'm creating MCAS constructed responses that are aligned with the multiplication standards. To go along with that, um, we've also been coaching and collaborating with teachers to improve their mathematical instruction, and implementing, and trying to implement guided maths, or more small group instruction, in a lot of the elementary classrooms as well. And that also is aligned with what some of our curriculum meeting information is being presented to the teachers.
And one time allows working with some targeted intervention groups, working in some small groups, or, um, individual students, for some targeted intervention.
So next steps in kind of our vision that we're trying to plan for this year, is to create a long-term vision for where we wanna see Walpole Math in the elementary level go. So this would include district-wide common assessments, whether we want to use the Envisions ones, whether they're the topic assessments, the benchmark assessments, or creating our own based on the Envisions lessons. And also creating a district-wide scope and sequence in mass, so that we can assure that all four elementary schools are following the same scope and sequence throughout the year, to really target the resources that we're providing for teachers, as well as help with interventionists and their role that they play in the classroom.
We've already, we've already been implementing professional development, but we'd like to do that more, um, working on the guided math structure in the classrooms for teachers who are already comfortable with it, going in and helping them, and, um, giving them different strategies. And then some teachers aren't comfortable yet, or haven't been trained in that, and going in and, and running the model for them.
Um, we're also going to be bringing new ideas and routines to the teachers for the classrooms. Next week, I'm taking a team of teachers from Elm Street School to a conference on guided math, and then we're going to bring it back to the teachers at the elementary level, to bring back what we learned at the conference, and what could be implemented in our classrooms.
And then finding resources, whenever, finding sources on our own, or when teachers ask us, can you find us something on this, um, to make sure that they've got places to go and resources, and feel comfortable asking us for information.
Are there any questions?
This is Gallo.
I can't, I'm very excited about this. You've done a lot of work. And it's exciting, it's, it's good stuff, because not every elementary teacher feels comfortable in that area. So I think you're on to something really, really powerful. Um, you had a bullet on the previous slide about tier-one interventions. We don't really know too much about that language, but I think that means, like, interventions that the regular classroom teacher will do for... Just tell us a little bit about that.
So RTI is Response to Intervention, and it's essentially a pyramid where the majority of students fit in the bottom. That's eighty percent of students can grow and make growth with regular differentiated instruction by the classroom teacher.
And that'd be tier one.
And then you get into the tier two and the tier three, where you might see the intervention from Title I, or tier three, where you might see intervention from an MSN. Uh, so the curriculum meeting this past week, and we're going to flip-flop, so we did Elm Street School and OPR, and then in January, we're going to do Boyd and, and Fisher. It was all about how to intervene, how to differentiate in your classroom as a classroom teacher. So it might look like some students are getting work on addition and subtraction up to the hundreds place, whereas some might be getting it up to the thousands place, or the ten-thousands place. Or, in the reverse, that they might be differentiating based on the content, where some students are ready to move on beyond addition and subtraction, and they might be ready for a harder school, skill, like multiplication and division, where other students still need that review on addition and subtraction in the basics. And we've actually been using Freckle data to form those groups, because Freckle does give you the ability to see where students are at within a specific domain. So if I'm looking at the base ten domain, I can go into my Freckle class groupings and see which standards students are working in, so that I can group them accordingly, that I can target that intervention.
So, this is my, this is my only other question. Can you tell yet whether this is an area where teachers are comfortable, or are they looking to, because they realize that we need to do more in terms of helping the typical elementary teacher feel comfortable with tier-one interventions?
So I would say that most of the feedback that I got from my three to five at OPR and Elm Street, was that they were very thankful for the information, because they felt like that was something that they needed to improve on in their classroom. And it actually sparked a lot of coaching conversations, where I've been going into a lot of classrooms these past couple weeks, since we had that, where I've been modeling a lot of the interventions that we talked about in that meeting. So I think it's something that they know they wanna improve on, they just didn't have the resources in order to do that.
I do think they're feeling, um, much more comfortable coming, coming to us and asking us. We're split between two schools, and so I have set days that I'm at Boyd, and but an OPR teacher will feel very comfortable emailing me that day, and getting response right back, and, and vice versa.
I think that tells that you're being effective, because I, I would imagine that's one of the hardest things, especially for people who feel like maybe they weren't as trained in math as they wish they were at this point. So, that's awesome. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Alison Colaruso and Jill Masterson, who'll talk about the middle school.
Carrie Taylor.
Sorry, just a second.
That's okay. All right.
So I'm Jill Masterson, I'm the math coach intervention specialist at Johnson Middle School.
And I'm Carrie Taylor, I'm the bird middle school math coach, math intervention specialist.
So we actually set up our presentation very similarly for you, with, uh, beginning with our first sixty days as math coaches, and what we're doing in our respective schools. Um, and one of the big pieces for us is data collecting and analyzing. We started the school year, we developed skills assessments for each of the grade levels, six, seven, and eight, based on standards that they've learned in previous grades, that are prerequisites for the grade that they're going into. And those were given within the first few days of school. And we analyzed that data to get an idea of who our struggling students were, ones that we wanted to put on our radar right away. It allowed us the opportunity to identify these students for teachers right from the start, um, to recognize students who might need interventions, um, in their classrooms or through extensions. We identified specific standards at the different grade levels, that we felt, um, the majority of students did not show proficiency, and we communicated this with teachers, so that those skills could be spiraled into the curriculum, um, and their lessons, to allow the students to be more successful with the new material that they're learning, by spiraling in those, uh, prerequisite skills. At our first building-based math meeting, uh, we facilitated a conversation where teachers analyzed a breakdown of the proficiency levels for each individual standard that was assessed on MCAS, um, to identify common strengths and weaknesses, both within and across grade levels. One of the common weaknesses that we recognized, actually, across all three grade levels and across both schools, kind of focused in geometry, and we have some elements in our next steps piece about what we're doing with that information going forward.
You're the next bullet.
Oh, I am the next bullet, aren't I? All right. Um, the other piece, providing interventions within the classroom. One of the big ones is that we're not only providing interventions in the regular ed classrooms, we're getting into special education academic support classes, and we're working with, um, our English language learners on a cycle basis as well. So we're not just strictly working in those regular ed, uh, education classrooms, we're trying to offer these interventions across the board to students who need it. When needed, we will work with individual students to address specific concerns. We might do this through our extensions blocks, working within the classroom, supporting teachers as they support those students as well. Um, and we also have expanded and offered some support for parents as well. We sent home a letter to parents, it went through, but, when it came from both schools, we co-wrote it to offer resources for parents when their student is struggling on a homework assignment, or preparing for an assessment, to give them some go-to resources that they can easily access. an assessment to give them some go-to resources that they can easily access, access for free, to support their student at home as well.
And then we also teach two math labs. So we teach a seventh grade math lab and an eighth grade math lab. And the math labs at the middle school level are for students that are in regular education but have been identified previously as struggling in math. And so in those math labs, what we do is we take previously standards that were supposed to be mastered or proficient from a previous grade level and we really teach and review and measure the success on that standard. And those standards are pulled from what they're currently learning in their math class. So in math seven, if they're learning how to solve an equation, but they're still struggling with adding and subtracting of positives and negatives, we'll review adding and subtracting positives and negatives in our math lab so that they can access the current content standard in their math seven class. And within those, we also will help keep them current with the current material. So if they have a big test, we'll help them study for the test and do kind of what we can to support them while also closing those gaps that might exist previously. And then we've improved communication between the buildings. So Bird and Johnson are now in constant communication. We actually meet once a cycle. So once every seven school days, we get to sit down together and talk about like, what is the data showing us? What are they doing at Johnson that Bird can do and vice versa? And then also, what are we doing to increase the communication amongst our teachers? So our eighth grade math teachers talking to each other and how can we facilitate that conversation to make sure that we're on the same page, which is leads us into the building of relationships with the teachers. So the idea that we are running the PLCs this year and kind of facilitating that conversation to build the trust and build the communication amongst the teachers themselves, but also with us so that they know that we can come into their classrooms, we can help them and support them, and that we're a non-evaluative piece. So we're not going to be the ones that are saying, you got a four out of four on a rubric. We're going to say this might be a weakness, but these are the resources that you can use and I'm here to kind of support you as well. And so that takes time because that trust has to be there between us. So with all of that, some of our next steps is our Advanced Algebra One class, which we're in constant communication with Dave Passagio about of what's this going to look like? When are we going to be identifying students? Are we going to be offering this next year in math for grade eight students? And so we are looking to identify students at the end of term three this year. And we have a process in place of what exactly that's going to look like, but continuing that communication to make sure we have a vertical alignment between what's happening at the middle school level and what's happening at the high school level.
Some opportunities for increased collaboration amongst middle school teachers. An example we have is coming up actually next week. We have developed time for our eighth grade teachers to work together because they are working with a newly designed curriculum, still covering the same standards, but in a more fluid and meaningful manner to hopefully allow for more consistency in the teaching. We're working to create common assessments at that grade level as well. So this will offer them an opportunity to work with their counterparts from both buildings and to allow them the opportunity to discuss concerns, areas of weakness, things that they're noticing, and to just continue to improve that curriculum to improve instruction for students. We're looking to continue to meet and discuss vertical alignment. We've actually met on a couple of occasions at this point with the elementary school coaches. We also meet on a regular basis with Dave Passagio from the high school. And as Carrie mentioned, we meet together once a cycle. So we're creating more communication for the math department as a whole, not just at the middle school level, but vertically throughout the district as well.
And so like Jill said, one of our weaknesses that we identified from that day where we spent time was looking at geometry standards. And so what we're looking at is really how is the geometry standards being taught? How is the sixth grade teaching it? How does the seventh grade teaching it? How is the eighth grade teaching it? We know so far at through our analysis of kind of where is it being taught? At the eighth grade level, we put it into the solving equations to hopefully create some more conceptual understanding behind the geometry and behind the formulas, to then hopefully build that procedural fluency of how do I manipulate a formula? How do I solve an equation? And how does it all tie together? And so we're just watching to kind of see and analyze what's happening and where can we kind of jump in to make sure that it's really strong and what does the MCAS look like as a result next year?
And then the other piece is we're working to support teachers with their individual goals. We both met with each of our math teachers in our respective buildings to talk about their student learning goals and their professional practice goals that they have for themselves for this year. Dave actually mentioned one of the goals that one of my eighth grade math teachers is working with. And so being able to be part of that conversation, know what she's doing, and finding ways to support her and the students that she's working with in that has been hugely beneficial. It gives us purpose when we're going in to their classrooms at that observation level to know what it is that they're trying to improve on, what their goals are for themselves and for their students for the year. So it really gives us a way to focus our attention and allow them to get really positive and effective feedback from us on a regular basis. Any questions?
For the questions. Dr. Goff?
Thank you. You can see the energy and passion that these four individuals have. It's pretty amazing. We're very fortunate. And just, just a couple of things, that the amount of data they've been able to collect and analyze in such a short amount of time and establish action steps. I mean, this is what they're able to do. So the teachers, to bring that to the teachers and then they're able to implement those action steps and really expedite that where it took us how much time last year to do this without them. So that ability to, to create the data and try to put it in one place, I think is, is exceptional. And also improving the communication between the schools. I mean, to have them to be able to collaborate with each other, but then also to collaborate with the schools and to have some consistency, I think really is going to be important and provide some wonderful direction moving forward. So I, I thank them for their efforts.
This is Galavan. Didn't want to disappoint. Two small questions, but it's amazing. It's great. And I think it's really going to benefit a lot of kids. Similar to when, when Steve Imbush was here, I'm sure you know, but once a kid starts feeling like, I hate math, or I just can't do it, or I'm not good at it, it's, it's a disservice. And what you're doing, I think, is going to make a huge difference. So thank you. Two quick questions. The math labs, is that at a particular grade level or is it at sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade?
We, we each have two sections of seventh grade math lab and two sections of eighth grade math lab.
Oh, wow.
Sixth graders have both their regular math class and the Math Connections class. So they're already getting that additional math opportunity at that grade level. So we, yeah, we both have seventh and eighth grade.
Perfect. And same question that I asked the elementary coaches. The tier one intervention, to me, that's part of the, the real success of, of, of a teacher. And is that something that you feel like you're also making some good headway with the teachers that they will sort of add skills to their, their toolbox?
Yeah. So, so I actually teach in a math eight classroom. And so she sees me every day doing some of these interventions in my tier two. And she's kind of adopted some of those into her regular ed classroom, which has been great to kind of model that. But then I'm also in every classroom at least once a cycle, every teacher's classroom once a cycle. And I jump, we jump into the lessons where we need to jump in to give some of that clarification and that differentiation.
That's great.
And then also with our feedback from our observations, we're giving them specific points on where they can do some more differentiation or asking them questions like, how are you making sure that all of your students are successful? And so this way, they're starting to prompt those conversations. Our PLC is also focused on how do we ask good questions in the classroom to ensure that differentiation is happening and push the higher level students while also keeping those lower level students with us in class because we can't do it two separate ways.
And in a similar fashion to some of the elementary feedback you got in the sense that not every elementary teacher feels that they're a math expert. I find that the work that we're able to do with our MSNs, our special educators, has had a very similar effect because for them, math may not be their go-to, their strength. So by us being able to provide support for them in their academic support classes, their small group, they can then carry that into the co-teaching that they do in the regular ed classroom and support their students in math even greater. So.
Thank you.
Right.
Anyone else? For those newer employees to Walpole Public Schools, you can tell Mrs. Galavan was a math teacher.
Very excited.
Another point of information which I think is important, just as a year ago, we began our budget sort of cycle and dialogue, which we do again. And at that initial workshop, we, we looked at, I think is really an important piece for the community, what type of support staffs our neighbor districts have. So tonight, we looked at SAT and AP data, which is a, which is a rubric that our, our kids are judged against other communities. And we as, as a committee and as leadership council, have committed ourselves to sort of examining what that next level of, of support is. And I think, you know, the math coaches as well as digital learning coaches, which is, this is year two of really provide an incredibly vital services. We explore, every time we build our budget, we build it from the ground up. It's a zero-based budget. We explore what type of additional services we can provide and what, what tools we can give our educators to, to maximize student achievement. And it's just that this whole evening has been great to hear about ways in which we're, we're getting to that next level of, of educational tools that we can give and, and options we can give our students. I think that's very, especially the, the sort of the courses you're teaching that are, are helping students who, who struggle as well as the, the ability for you to be in every classroom, every cycle. That, that's just a huge step forward for me as someone who's been on for seven years now to see just how we're, we're operating on a day-to-day basis. And these are, these are great benchmarks and something that may lead to a further dialogue about other areas and, and sort of positions like the ones you guys are pioneering in our district. But it's, it's just a really exciting stuff. Perhaps maybe dry, but it's, it's very exciting to see. Exciting to see the district, the direction our district is going with, with your help. So we're very grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I meant like the reports are dry. I was going to say, you're dry.
Thank you.
Excellent. Moving rapidly along to old business. Superintendent Search update.
It's me. Obviously, our, our school committee conducted a formal interview of Dr. Goff for the position of superintendent of schools on Monday. We had 90 minutes of questions, 30 questions that were, I think, all of them multifaceted, where Dr. Goff comported herself quite well. Some of those questions were called from a lot of feedback we had from the community. We had some community submitted questions as well, which we were happy about. And I, I know some of my other colleagues are going to want to chime in, but I thought we had a really wonderfully robust discussion. We got to see your answers to a number of really themes, the theme of, of budget, the theme of leadership, the theme of communication and community, that allowed us to really see some different sides of you perhaps that, that we haven't been able to in, in our experience working with you as a member of our leadership team. And the committee was rightly and tremendously impressed. And at the end of, of that dialogue, voted unanimously to begin contract negotiations with you, which will begin shortly. But I just opened it up now for any of my colleagues to kind of restate any of their thoughts or, or things that, that came up to them in our Monday night meeting.
Ms. Syrek. Sure. I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, as somebody who's newer to the school committee and someone whose child did not go to Bird, you know, I don't have, I have not had the same experience as some of the other school committee members. But I did sit in on, I think, almost all of the interviews with the community, with the staff, with some of the town members. And, you know, it gave me an opportunity to get to know you better. So as somebody who didn't have that previous experience, you know, I was very impressed with the questions, with your, the thoughtfulness of your answers, with your whole packet that we received. So I just wanted to reiterate that for people who don't have the experience with you, that, you know, I got to know you and think that everybody will be well-served. Bye.
Thank you.
Ms. Murchini.
I just want to say, I think we're all delighted and reiterate that we're very pleased for a number of reasons. But it was, it was nice to see during the interview how much you let up when you talked about instruction. That's exciting, I think. And, and so that since I sit on the curriculum committee and thinking about all of the things we're doing and then all the things were presented tonight, it kind of all ties in together, which is great. And then just to reiterate a little bit what I said the other night, you know, I also like, Kristen said, I'm on the other side of town. We, I haven't had you as a principal or teacher of any of my children, but I have gotten to know you through the SOIs and I can see your strengths in that as well, really understanding the larger picture and the challenges facing a lot of the buildings in this town. And your, I think, growing understanding of the budget. Obviously, you've done your own for your own school, but sort of the whole system wide, all the pieces that come into play. So anyways, it's very exciting and I know you're up for the challenge. And I've seen your work, most importantly, I've seen you work so collaboratively with leadership, with us, with teachers, and with parents, especially in the Save Schools Initiative that we've been doing. So, yeah, thrilled.
Mrs. Galavan.
I think we have a great opportunity here. I think that cha, I'm not one who necessarily embraces change, but I, I think it's, it's an exciting time for our town. And I think that, that the things that really stood out to me, I didn't sleep on Monday night. I tossed and turned for most of the night because I was thinking about so many things that we discussed and the opportunities that are, that are there for us. But I think that the, the passion and the commitment for, for Walpole and our students was just something that was, was really exciting to think about. And I was also thinking about how you, your interactions with students were excellent. And interactions with teachers and administrators and community members were, were good, but I really, really liked to see the interaction with the students. And they really appreciated it. They really appreciated the chance to get to know what our next leader is going to be like. I also, as a school committee member, think that we got some great feedback from the community. And I would like to make sure that we build that into our process every year. I know that you can get to a point where you're doing too many surveys. I don't think we've done enough. I think that, that the community had some important things that we needed to hear. And a lot of it reinforced what I thought I knew. And even if that was the case, I think it was important to hear the, the depth that some people gave us when they talked about the things that mattered to them the most. So I think that, that we purposefully started this process early in the school year in case we didn't feel that we had the, the ideal candidate here. We would have had an opportunity to, to go out and look further. But, but boy, I think we really do have a great opportunity here. And I think that, that it'll be, it'll be great to see you use the next few months to get ready to really take over. I think that by itself is another important opportunity. So that's my summary.
Thank you. It, to Mrs. Galavan's point, we're at a very interesting period in our district. We're a few days away from the MSBA's decision for our statements of interest. We're a couple of months away from our, from our strategic plan update where we'll create a five-year strategic plan. And, you know, that's a, that's a great undertaking, but an undertaking that really gives us the benchmarks from the community and from the Walpole Public School community on how to move forward. So there's a lot of exciting, new things happening in our district and along with the one-to-one initiative and new staff people as well and, and new roles. So there's a lot going on and it's, it's a good time for you to begin a new chapter of your employment here with us.
Thank you. It's, it's an honor and a privilege. That's all I'm going to say because I spoke a lot enough on Monday night. So I'll give everybody a break.
Mrs. Galavan.
Just one other small point. We did not replace, we did not replace Dr. Lynch. He's out of town at a conference. And he will be, he will be back, just in case anybody's confused.
He did promise to come back. Excellent. Very good. That finishes old business. We now move on to Article Five, citizens' comments. If there are any citizens who would like to comment, you are welcome to do so. Mary, Ann, anyone. Excellent. Seeing none, I will move back to approval of warrants, donations, and minutes. Ms. Syrek.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the payroll warrant dated November 15th, warrant number S920A for the amount listed in your packet.
Second. Motion by Ms. Syrek, second by Ms., Mr. Breen. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 500.
Would like to make a motion to approve the following accounts payable warrants from November 21st, warrant number 219021, and from the 29th, warrant number 219022 for the amounts listed in your packet.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Syrek, second by Ms. Murchini. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 500.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following gifts and donations to the Bird, Boyd, and Elm, Fisher, Johnson, Old Post Road, and Boyd, and Elm, Fisher, Johnson, Old Post Road, and Walpole School, High Schools. From the Junior Women's Club of Walpole, donation of nursing supplies in the amount totaling fourteen hundred dollars. To the Daniel Feeney Preschool, from the Irma L. Rosenthal and Bernard H. Rosenthal DDS, a donation for Irma's bookcase in the amount of five hundred dollars. And to the Fisher Elementary School, from Bay State Textiles Recycling, the amount of forty-four dollars.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Murchini, second by Ms. Syrek. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Approval of minutes.
Make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from November fifteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Second. Motion by Ms. Murchini, second by Mr. Breen. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. We do have a need for a brief executive session for the purposes of union and non-union negotiation strategies. We shall not be returning after. Have a motion to enter into executive session.
So, second.
Motion by Mr. Breen, second by Mrs. Galavan. Poll of the committee.
Yes.
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 Again, we will not be returning to regular session. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.